And he will join us if he's able. So, good evening everyone. I hereby call the City of Hartsfield South Carolina Work Session amended for Tuesday, May 7th, 2024 order. Thank you all for being here for this meeting. We hopefully won't take too terribly long, but we do need to talk about this stuff. So, Kev, on my mic, if you would kick us off with the invocation, we'll follow that with Pledge of Legion and Civility pledge. I would invite you all to stand and pray in your faith as we pray in ours.
Let us pray. Most holy and everlasting Father, dark God, and God alone. Father, we thank you for this assembly today, that we're able to come and do the business of the City of Hartsfield that we all love so much. We realize, Lord, that it is in you that we live, move, and have our being. So, Father, we pray that your precious Holy Spirit come into this meeting. Lead us, guide us, and help us to do the thing that is right and fair, that is just and good for every citizen, every service, and every section of this City of Hartsfield. Let us go forward and grow forward together. Lord, we ask thee and all other blessings, in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ, we do pray. Amen.
Thank you all very much. And Mr. Manager, I'll kick it over to you. If you'd like, feel free to move item C up first, since we have a guest here to speak.
Yes, so we have a few items on the agenda tonight, today rather. And so, we have Ms. Jen Wilkinson here from KCG, and so, we invited her to come talk about this potential workforce housing development that's going to be potentially located next to Humane Society on East Washington Road, I believe, East Washington. And so, I was going to see if you want to come up, and then you guys should have received several documents from her across the last couple of weeks and from us as well. I wanted to open it up, and she had this little presentation, if she could start with that, and then you guys can ask any questions of her, if that's okay with you.
Thank you.
Jen, it's all yours.
Thank you, thank you. Let me get my computer up here real quick. First off, I'd like to thank y'all for having me here today. Appreciate it, and I apologize in advance for all agnozium emails that you've received to me. I'm very passionate about what I do for a living, and I hope you guys read that through all of the emails I have sent. This opportunity is an opportunity I've been working on since 2017. We've looked at multiple sites in the city to build some workforce affordable housing. We have decided, we've done our investigating and realized there is a demand here that you need it, and that's what we do for a living. We don't do commercial real estate. We are building affordable housing throughout nine states right now. I am responsible for South Carolina and Georgia. I've been building in South Carolina since 2005. I have over 5,400 units that I have built alone throughout our state. And again, as I said earlier, I'm very passionate about what I do. This project, I feel, has got an opportunity twofold. One, it's nothing like we've ever built before. We are stepping outside of our comfort zone and doing some innovation items on this, which I'll discuss with you. Then we also have the State Housing Agency who gives us our tax credits that we use during construction to build our properties. They have never seen a project like this before, so I feel like we are bringing them around to what they should see in affordable housing going forward. I feel like this is a pilot for them, and I think it's going to get an award one day if we get it awarded, because this is something different than they've ever seen before as well. So, I'm going to run through the next slide that just kind of tells you a little bit about KCG. The company is new, it was built in, founded in 2015 by two developers, or one developer, excuse me, my boss. But he's also been in it probably about 30 years as well as I have been. So, we've all, we have a very good executive team that we put together to build this company. We were number eight in the nation last year, sorry, in 2023. We were number eight in the nation, and we want to go higher, so we're looking to double our portfolio in the next three years. So, South Carolina is a small, we're only allowed to do small properties in South Carolina. Our bigger properties come in Texas or Wisconsin and those areas, but South Carolina, you're looking at around 50 to 80 to 90 units every time we get an award to build a property. Tell a little bit about the program. It's very competitive. We are not financed at all by HUD. We are financed by state tax credits that come to each state, and those funds are given to us during construction. We take out a construction loan to pay them back, and then we take out a mortgage to pay back our investors over 10 years. So, it is a mortgage property. As on here, we talk about, we are a fully integrated property. We are the owner, we are the management company, we're the contractor, and we are the architect. We are going to be your neighbor as well for many years to come, so we are not going to pack up and leave. Another piece of this, our construction, we do hire locally. I do want to let you know that, even though our company is out in Indianapolis, I am in Charleston, South Carolina. We do hire our labor locally. That is what we do. We love doing that, because we love to give back to the communities that we build in. On the next slide, this is our property. If you look at the top left corner of the picture, that is Low Time Improvement. The middle left of the picture is Goodwill, and we are focusing on Phase One right now. Phase One is nine acres. The remainder acreage is about 16 acres. It's just Phase Two, which we're going to hold back, and I'll talk about that in a second. But right now, today, we're going to talk about Phase One. Phase One, we have a site plan coming up that kind of shows you, we've got 80 units. There are five buildings on this property. They're 100% tax credit workforce housing. We call them workforce, because we have multiple levels of area median income that we allow for rent and income on our property. And that's where we get the workforce from. We are not all low-income, as in HUD housing. We don't have Section Eight vouchers on our property. This, you have to have good credit, you have to have a job or some sort of income, seniors still get income. And you also have to have, take care of it. We expect you to take care of it, so also credit. Let's see, kind of gives you a little bit about the amenities. I know you guys have already looked through this, y'all have had this for a few days, but this is, like I said, it's kind of different. We're looking at a solar component on this property. We're going to do a frisbee golf course that's going to connect from Phase One into Phase Two, so it kind of ties the two phases together. As I mentioned, Phase Two, we're looking at another 100 units, so it's 180 units between the two properties. Phase One is going to also have solar pathway lights, lighting on ballards around our walking trail. We'll have a puppy park. We're trying to play with the Humane Society a little bit and work with them, incorporate with them, with some internship for the residents that live there or the children that live there. They can do an internship with the Humane Society. They can work with their neighbors on getting an allowance for walking a dog. So, that's kind of a little bit about the difference that we're doing here. We're really pulling community together, we feel. We work with Lowe's Home Improvement. We've got an activity pavilion, so a lot of people have Etsy shops these days. They work from home. They like to do crafts, so we have an activity pavilion where Lowe's will come over and show people how to use power tools, or they'll show them how to start an at-home business. So, we're trying to incorporate, you know, a great livability. Also, on Phase One, we're doing an Agri-Hood concept, and the Agri-Hood concept is kind of like a live off the land. We'll have some fruit trees, we'll have some raised garden beds. In our clubhouse, we'll have an entire herb wall. We'll have cooking classes in our clubhouse, so the residents can learn to grow their food on the land. It is agriculture land, so it should do very well out there, and then bring those into the clubhouse, and then we'll have cooking classes and teach them how to eat healthy and sustainably. So, that's something different than no one's seen before in workforce housing. Okay, we can go to the next slide. Thank you. So, I told Brian the other day, we call, I call this the big house concept, but I've been told that's a prison. So, I actually like this concept we did here. We normally see two-story walk-ups. It's a lot of wasted space and breezeways, a lot of wasted energy trying to light the, light the breezeways. So, we've got single entries on the ground floor. These kind of have the townhouse feel as well. Your upstairs apartments, you will walk in the first, in the front door and go up a stairwell. It's interior, so all that is heated and cooled by that interior space. It's really, this is a beautiful building. So, this is what we call a ground floor entry, and it's kind of a different concept. I've ridden through every apartment community here, and I don't think you have anything similar to this. But we're trying to kind of make this look like a nice, big, southern home versus two-story breezeway bland building, as some people build. We do build those, I'll say, we do build those. It just depends on the area, and I think with the, all the other bells and whistles we're putting on this property, I think this is a really great look. But we will go through a design shret with everyone from the city that wants to talk with them and work with them on colors and the design. We can make changes. We're just presenting this today to you guys like this. And the next slide. This is our site plan, so you'll come in on East Washington Street. To the left of that cul-de-sac is the Humane Society. You need some description of where we are. We've got five buildings. We've got a clubhouse in the middle on the field there. Frisbee Golf's in the bottom right corner. Like I said, it's going to connect to Second Phase. We are going to stub out the drive to the Second Phase when we build this one, so it'll be easily seamless combination between the two, the one off Swift Creek and then off of this East Washington. There, we have interconnected the entire property as a walking trail, so we're trying to get activities, get people outside. The ballards will be around the holding pond in the top left corner to light the walking trail. Those are solar. The dog parks to the right of the holding pond. And then the raised beds are in the middle by the clubhouse. You'll see those right behind it, and there will be a dog wash station off the back of the clubhouse. So, if Fido gets dirty, Fido can be washed outside and not inside your apartment. So, we do do that. At some of our properties, we find that very well. It helps keep the property very clean and the units very clean as well. To the right of the clubhouse, we've got a playground with a gazebo and then some grills in that area. And then, because we didn't, are not putting any patios on this property, we're trying to encourage community engagement, community gatherings. We will have services coming into our clubhouse to also do that with seniors or healthcare, job search, you know. We're just trying to, and let me back up for a second, just to tell you a little bit more about workforce and tax credit housing. So, we're kind of in the middle, if you will. You've got your HUD, Section Eight, low-income housing, and then you've got us in the middle, and then you've got your market rate. So, we're kind of in that middle, and I'll show you on the next slide a little bit more about that, who is going to live in our property. So, this is an interior design. Photos that we actually have in some of our other clubhouses. We do not look like your typical, we design outside the norm. So, this will show you what our interiors are. We actually delivered three of these this past month, so these are fresh off the rack pictures. We've got interior design and house that works for the architect firm, and they kind of make it feel like what the community feels like. Trying to see if the top, so, yeah, I think the two up top are in the north, so you know, the beams are real. In Texas, actually, those are in the west, those are Texas, so those are kind of the beams really come through there. Bottom right, I believe, is in Wisconsin, and I'm not sure where the bottom left is, I apologize. But it kind of shows you that we're not only outside designing, we're also interior designing, so the residents are comfortable, they understand. This is a place we want them to commune and get to know each other. All right, next slide. And this is some exterior. So, the Reserve at One Place is coming online right now. It's a property we've got in Georgia that's finishing up. It's a big property, it's right up by a military base. That one has 280 units in it. It has a swimming pool. Top right, we did an adaptive reuse on an old mill. We've got a brewery that's in the corner of that. We did do commercial on that one. We've got a little brewery, microbrew there in that building. But that was a fun project, and just so you know, I've been looking around at some old buildings here and some old schools, so old schools make great senior housing. We really can adapt those very well. The bottom two are just our standard, you know, interior breezeway or exterior breezeway apartments. These two are, I also believe, in the, in Texas, were the interiors that you just saw. Three of these just are coming online within the last month and coming online now, so those are all brand-new properties.
Where's the mill?
The mill is in New York. This is what I put together the slide. This one tells you a little bit about who lives here. You know, these folks that, that we, and most of our properties that we build, they're already your neighbors. They're already here, or they're moving here, which is big too, because when they move here, they bring people here, or their industry is already here, but the industry needs people to live here, because you want to keep your bigger employers here, and the only way to do that is to have somewhere for these folks to live. So, this kind of tells you a little bit about the average income. So, we have three bedrooms, so we can have up to six people in the three bedrooms. Or one bedrooms are usually two, one to two people. And I wanted, the bottom right corner, just to kind of show you what a retiree in Hartsfield, what they bring in income-wise every year. $22,000 is what they live off of. That's why we build what we build. We can, we do build market rate, but we don't do a whole lot of market rate, but this is why we do what we do. You've got your teachers, you've got your community employees, you've got your transportation, your food and service beverage folks. You know, we try to give them a nice, new, safe environment to live. Hopefully, you see that in the photos that we've presented today. You probably know a lot of these people. Maybe some of you are these folks that are on this list, so just want to kind of make sure y'all see that and see that these people already live here. Some of them may be needing a better living environment, so. All right, next slide. And this is a little bit about our timeline. We are coming upon the tax credit deadline. It's May 24th. We have to have everything submitted to State Housing, and it takes them several months to go through the applications, make sure who can get, has the best score, and then they divvy up the tax credits and award based on how many units, et cetera. It's a long, drawn process. I'm not going to go through that for you, with you, but this kind of gives you a timeline of how long it's going to take before you see us come out of the ground. My goal is to close this property before the end of the year. There's a second round, which is another round that can be done in the fall, which we would put the second phase in for that funding in that round. It's not as competitive as this round. It's a little bit less competitive. It's competitive, it's just not as competitive, where points mean, mean if you get awarded or not. So, this is just kind of telling you timeline-wise, and this is with me sitting in front of you today. I wanted to bring this up, because if we don't get awarded, which I'm not saying we will 100% get awarded, but if we don't get awarded, you're most likely looking at five to seven years before you have another apartment community built in this town for that middle income. It's very competitive. That's why I'm here today. And that's, that's the sad part of our business, because there's not enough money for everybody to get awarded. So, you have to put your best foot forward and ask for everything you can to be able to get awarded and then begin construction. So, if we don't get awarded, which would probably be, I think we have on here, August is when we should receive our letter from State Housing, if we've been awarded or not, then they usually change the rules, and you got to wait another two years, and it's going to take me another two to three years to come out of the ground. So, you're, I always tell, you know, four to five years to get another award, because they change the scoring every year or two, so they can spread the tax credits across the state. So, that's why Hartsfield has not seen a new construction here in three, four years, I think, was the last round. And then this is what, on the right side's kind of our budget, just so you, I want to let you guys know, and I think I mentioned this in my email. Our total development cost on this site is about $22 million right now, and second phase, we're looking anywhere from 35, 38, depending on interest rates in two or three years. So, you're looking at probably about a $60 million project between the two. And then, right now, our tax revenue would be $64,000 to, is what we've figured on Phase One. Phase Two would be more, of course, because it's more units and more income. But I just want to kind of show you that timeline as well. The next slide. I just wanted to go back. I know that we've talked a lot about, about the property. I think if we want to go into the resolutions, is that what I would do? Okay.
I think at this point, like you have the, you have made a request, maybe to give them a couple of time to answer some questions.
Yes, absolutely. I'm sorry.
We'll start. Mr. Braddock, if you have any questions. Good. I think I have too. Any, any gaps or questions I have, you have, I think, filled in. I was really, really cool to see the list of amenities. That's, I kind of want to live there myself, and we appreciate you working with your neighbors, Lowe's, Humane Society, et cetera. But I don't have anything else to say to you.
Yeah, I got it, I got it.
Hi.
Thanks for coming. Yeah, I just want to say you're a skilled, it's quite a, it's, some of the amenities sound good, so I hope it works. I visited your property up in Lancaster, it's a small property, a couple of weeks ago. And what they caught my attention there and a lot of places here.
They call them like stormwater, park, whatever.
So, if you look at the property in Lancaster, another place in here in Hartsfield, and I've seen different places where, why can't they incorporate stormwater, like a park or a pond to be enjoyed?
You know, bring it into the, to the, to the properties. Sitting there looking stupid. You can design it such a way, you can have a bridge across, people can enjoy like picnic tables. Have you ever thought about doing that?
The biggest thing that comes to mind when you ask that question is liability.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because I know people will put a canoe in, they'll put a powder board in, they'll go swim in, so that it's liability.
Yeah, that's pretty much.
And a lot of them, a lot of them have moving water, you know, a fountain, and it's got electricity attached to it, so you don't want someone doing the backstroke in that.
Yeah, I would mention like current local, now you say local, you mean like statewide or regional?
In your city. We, yes, we do Section Eight, Form, it's Form Three, Section Three, I think it is, construction is required under this program, so we have to try and hire as much locally as possible.
Yeah, because sometimes you can't find a local company to work. You got to go outside.
Yeah.
That's a reference for.
Preferences.
You got to get.
Preferences in town, correct.
Okay, so.
Because we know they're going to show up for work.
So, basically, what you need from other.
Yeah.
We're going to go through that, okay.
Yes, yes. I'm glad you were able to be here today.
Thank you.
I lived at the Swift Creek Apartments when they were first built, and at the time that they were built, they were the best complex in the city. I lived in a two-bedroom apartment. So, what is the square footage on like for three-bedroom, two-bedroom, one-bedroom?
So, the one-bedrooms start around 750, the two-bedrooms are around 840, 840 to 850, and the three-bedrooms are around 1,200.
So, I could actually take my house and sit inside again a three-bedroom?
Yes, ma'am.
So, that, that's spacious. Any pricing available yet?
Yes, so we have got, I think in an email that I sent to you guys, the rents begin, because again, that word points, I know we love hearing that while we're talking to you guys. You have to do 20% AMI as well, and a lot of those will be your retirees. So, those are around 200, and then our maxima's around 1,100.
That's monthly rent?
Correct.
$200 monthly rent?
That would be a 20% AMI individual.
Okay.
And then it goes up to 60%. And then the second phase would be 60s and 80s, so that would mean that your AMI here would be higher, because we're going to be having a bigger spread than 80%.
And what I've seen happen is people from older complexes, sometimes they will move into the new complex, because when I lived at Swift Creek Apartments, right across the street, they built a new complex called Oakview. And at that point, I said, okay, do I move to Oakview or do I build a home? And I was blessed to be able to build a home. But having affordable housing, attainable housing, workforce housing, whatever name that's given to it, is something that our city really, really needs, and it is going to bring new people to our city, because we have another apartment complex that was renovated called Forest Acres, and they have people from other cities that actually relocated to Hartsfield just because of the apartments.
And you make a good point. I love when people realize what you just said, because it, we do fight a battle everywhere we go.
Right.
It's not really rehabilitative housing, but it kind of is. It is a step to owning your own home in the cities you live in.
Yes.
And so, we're there to help you build your credit up and show your payment history, because you, a child, or not a child, excuse me, you know, someone graduating from college and getting their first job may not have those things. They start with us, and they work their way into a home. So, I, it's a stepping stone.
Yes.
So, that's what, what we're, that's what we do for.
And the things that you were talking about in the, like the Activity Center, those are things that are needed, because oftentimes, residents may not know how to use a computer or may not know how to use, you know, different things that they need to be able to gain a better-paying job.
Right.
And, and that's always a plus as well.
Yes, that's correct. We work local banks a lot of times to come in and teach people how to save money, how to start a checking account. My child doesn't know how to write a check.
Yes. Those are some things that the schools have, you know, just forgotten about now. But I am thrilled about it. It looks great to me.
Thank you.
And we thank you for coming.
Thank you. And Kenzie, what you're speaking of about a park, that is one of my resolutions that I would like to have a deeper discussion on. There's a lot between us and Humane Society that has a sign on it for rent, that the Humane Society has approached as well to maybe make a, I call it, I called it Pocket Park, so a little park for anyone in that area to kind of hang out, you know, and they can enjoy the water view from our property, but. Yeah. Beautiful green space, because there's nothing over there right now.
If you could maybe talk about the point system, and then also talk about some of the requests you had, that would be great.
Yes.
There's a lot in the, in the thing, and I saw that there are individual resolution requests, and we've already discussed the first request, which was for the utility upgrades, which we've done to our lift station, if you can go into those details, that'd be great.
Yes, I specifically did them individually, because if you're like, yeah, we like that, but we're not wild about that, you didn't kill it all in one, so that's kind of why I went down that road. So, I didn't mean to really overwhelm everybody when I sent that, but, you know, like I said, we all get one shot at things sometimes. This is not one shot. So, in South Carolina, they have a point system, and what they do is they don't want everybody to be, score the same. So, the only way they can be, have their own justification for awarding someone is this point scores. So, this leveraging piece, as they call it, is really a piece that sets you apart from everybody else. And a lot of it is, it leans on you, unfortunately, to help us get those points. Luckily, you're not against Greenville or Charleston, you know, they've got their affordable housing bank account that they just can send out grants and stuff to, to folks. A lot of the smaller cities don't have that. So, in lieu of, you know, you writing us a check to go towards our leveraging, we're asking for some things that need to be done, we may want to have done in that area to help us get the points. I kind of wrote down, so Mark McDaniel over the last year, which you saw at the last resolution, was a point, it gives us a one point out of the five-point category. And this one point is very important. I'm not saying it's not, but it kind of gets us a fifth of the way there, because we need five points to be able to beat out other properties. We are right now sitting about mid, mid row for everyone that we're up against. So, for us to be able to surpass those folks, these points are crucial to us to be able to do that. We can sit and just keep our score right now and have the one point, which is very beneficial for us, not saying it's not, but we're also just one point ahead, and you know, Sumter or, you know, I can't remember other counties off my head right now, they come in and they're like, okay, we're going to give you two points to their developer. They're going to have three points to their developer, and they beat us, because we're. They're gonna give three points to their developer, and they beat us, because we're kind of, we're actually really tied with Sumter and a couple other cities, uh, or counties right down, um, ninety-five, because y'all are kind of in the same, um, uh, AMI area. So, um, that first resolution was what you guys saw at the last meeting, and that is something that, um, a lot of cities do do for their, their developers. Um, the other ones are, I just started thinking, y'all. Apologize for the last, the list of the other items. But the, the breakdown is, one point is up to two thou, one to two thousand dollars committed per unit. We have eighty units, just to do the math, so that's eighty thousand dollars a minimum. Two points is a hundred and sixty, three points is two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Four points is four hundred and forty thousand dollars, and five points is six hundred, six hundred and forty thousand dollars. And I think with the items that I sent to you, I got all but seventeen thousand, six hundred dollars, I got really close. Um, and again, these are just estimates of what we think these things will cost. This is a letter that we, uh, this is the commitments we would have to show to state housing in our application. These are the items that the city's willing to do for this development. Um, and it also shows your support, it just shows, yes, we know we need an affordable housing. So those other items on there, um, I think the P D R T A, which actually got a commitment from them, and I sent that out to you guys to show you that they are behind us as well. Um, placement of those, where they're gonna go, all that can come later when we have a deeper discussion, if we get the award. And again, that's another thing, a lot of this can be a commitment. If we don't get the award, we don't need the commitment, but if we get the award, then we would have to sit down and go, how are we gonna make this work? So, um, the other things were updated crosswalks, I saw some folks walking around there yesterday when I was in town, and they need updated crosswalks at that entrance right there at Fourth and East Washington. Um, landscaping down East Washington, because you're gonna have the Humane Society, hopefully a pocket park, and hopefully our development, and then you've got, would have a beautiful streetscape going down. Um, uh, solar panel, streetlights going down that same road, um, so you don't have to have a power bill, you gotta, you know, it's run by solar power. Um, the street signs, updated street signs there, and also on Swift Creek, um, I kinda rode around there, and like, there's need stop sign, or not stop sign, sorry, um, speed limit sign, you could update speed limit signs, um, that is just considered also an improvement. Um, sidewalks connecting, and I spoke with Lowe's, spoke to, um, the Humane Society, we would love to have a connection all the way to Fourth. If we put a bus stop down there, the sidewalk people, our residents can walk all the way down. Um, kids getting on the bus, we would love to have in front of the pocket park, um, another stop for the kids can stop, wait there for the bus as well. That was the other, the two, um, uh, bus stops. And then fire hydrants, of course, those have to happen. Um, didn't really see, but one, I think, on East Washington, so we were requesting an additional hydrant or two down near the cul-de-sac, and then maybe our hydrants on our property, one, phase one and phase two. But those are kind of some of, and then the pocket park, purchase of pocket park, I just guessed at the amount of money that it would cost to buy that site, um, and make a pocket park right there that we would love to be part of. Um, so those are just some things that, you know, I was here last week and was hoping to meet with a few of you guys to talk about. Those are some ideas that I had to help us get to the five points. Um, any questions?
Good. Is it, sorry? I don't think we have any more questions, but thank you for, uh, that, that was helpful to hear more about the, the point system. It's, 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 it's a game, right?
It is.
You have to play tough to get points. Um, I think that's all from us.
Okay.
Uh, does anybody else for this stand?
No, what I'll do is, uh, we'll follow up with you guys and talk about what we want to do, and certainly, so you need this by May twenty-fourth, and May fourteenth is our council day, which is when we would take action on anything, so that would be the.
I'll be here for that.
Okay, so that'd be the last day, though, you could typically get stuff, it'd be needed that day.
Yeah, cause we have to turn everything in to state housing on May, May twenty-fourth, we have to.
Gotcha. Uh, and the other item that was not discussed here was the ten points potentially for the comprehensive plan.
We took care of that.
Okay, so that's okay, and that doesn't require.
Your plan was already still in play?
Yes.
And already has all those components required.
Okay, so you're able to use that for ten points.
We're using plan, so we don't need anything for the plan. Thank you.
Okay.
Well, thanks again for coming.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And I, I forgot to say for the audience, um, there's a, a new issue, this Golden Life paper that, uh, is distributed throughout the P D targeting retirees, there's a front page article about, um, former councilwoman, uh, Alina Graham, that Stephen Drew wrote. Does anybody know where they distribute these specifically?
Somebody told me they have them at Shoney's.
Okay, so, um, I, I haven't read the whole thing yet, uh, from talking to, uh, Mr. Drew, it think it's really nice, so just be on the lookout for that. And I'll get back to you.
Uh, we'll, we'll just jump back into the regular assigned schedule, Jen, if that's okay with everyone? So I wanna jump into master plan updates, you guys have seen some of the, um, reports coming out about where we are, um, just give you an idea of what's going on. So, of course, we, uh, city council, you guys obligated the funds, now we've approved the funds to spend up to a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for a new master plan with the Bordeaux group. You have in front of you the twenty fourteen plan, which was actually done by the same group, and a lot of the same people are still there, including the lead on this, which is, really, doesn't happen a lot to get that. So Irene, uh, Tyson is the one who we've worked with before, she knows this very superior career with it, so we're excited to have her back on board for it. Um, what our plans are now is we are gonna meet on June eighteenth, I said nineteenth in the email, but it's June eighteenth. That is a, all day, it's a staff meeting with their team, they're gonna bring their entire team, it's gonna be about ten people from them, eight to ten people, and we will spend the day going around and looking at everything in the proposal that you guys have before you. You should've gotten it, um, in our, we'll leave the proposal for a hundred and seventy-five thousand, I'll send it to you guys again. But basically, we'll be looking at four critical areas that we determined based on our conversations, based on the Hartz Vision plan that we did. So housing is a big one, and then two focus areas, which are Sixth Street and Fourth and Aurora. So those two properties, or two projects potentially, are key areas for different, very different reasons, but the same reasons. Uh, and then the last one is again, an updated marketing and retail study, so all this will give us information, show us what type of housing we need, what type of, uh, market and retail we can support, and also focusing on a true plan, and what to do for Fourth and Aurora Road, uh, the ten acres there, and then also Sixth Street corridor. Um, a lot of stuff's gonna come out as well when we do the plan, um, there's gonna be more areas we're gonna look at, those are just the areas we're kind of earmarking, but we're gonna still be looking at, um, the area near the hospital, they wrote. Looking at different areas like east area, our corridor entry point, so all those things will be discussed as they were in this plan, but those are the key focus areas on that. Again, I'm requesting, so we need twelve to fifteen people on the steering plan. I would love to have a member of each, uh, representative of each district as part of that, so recommendation from you guys, and then it still allows us six to fifteen, or nine people rather, that we can add in as different skill sets, different walks of life. I'd love to get a very, uh, you know, diverse group in there to help us with everything. I mean, I'm talking every type of business that's in town, if we get somebody on there, it'd be fantastic. If you look at the Hartz Vision plan, or the City Hartz Four Master Plan twenty fourteen, you see a very diverse group in there, so I wanna replicate that. Any questions on that right now, for me?
So you can quit to make, uh, one rep?
One rep, and then we still can discuss, that's right. I thought that'd be good, just to get the people, so we need, we need community buy-in. That's gonna be critical to this, no matter what we do, uh, but I also need some expertise too, so I need kind of a mix of both. In addition to the steering committee, there's also gonna be a three-day charrette plan, and that, we narrowed down the dates to the end of July, I'll get you those dates. Um, that's when the team can use, again, their Bordeaux team, they're gonna be going and speaking and holding, hosting town meetings, uh, to, open to the public and requesting information from it. Um, already started talking with the Governor's School, Coker, uh, different groups to get their engagements, they can come and talk to us about what they wanna see, especially if they're around those different areas. So, but yeah, I do need, I would love to have some representation from each of your districts. If you guys, if you don't wanna do that, you can figure out another way. I need about twelve people, minimum. Okay? All right. All right, moving on, if, Christopher, would you show the PowerPoint? You guys got this in your email. So this is an update on the Public Safety Building, which we have been very hard at work at, um, really give credits to Police and Fire, they've really put in quite a bit of work on this. Uh, you'll notice that the site is, this is the Sixth and, uh, Carolina, and then the existing fire station. Uh, in my email to you guys, I explained that we had first tried to do a public safety complex, to combine it together as a public safety building, but not as a true public safety department, it'd still be separate, but still, but shared spaces. When it came down to the site, um, that site is just too small to really get that, we have to go vertically, and it was kind of becoming, uh, financially infeasible, be able to do that.
Cost prohibitive.
Cost prohibitive, too expensive, a little bit of that. And so, um, we went back to the drawing board with the team and decided to instead go with a split or a complex, kind of like an area you come to with shared spaces such as a parking lot. It's a brand-new public safety, a police building, and then it's, I think it's about twelve thousand square feet, thirteen thousand square feet, and then adding an additional four to five thousand square feet on the existing fire station, while still utilizing the main components such as the base. Uh, it could be a shared space, but if you go down to maybe the next slide, or next thing in it, there you go. This will have windows, so I already asked, um, I thought it was a cost-saving measure, but it's not. Um, do the next one, please, Christopher. So that's, it's gonna have the nine elements between the two, but that's the addition, that's gonna be the new face of the fire station. Uh, the entrance will be moved into the parking lot, and that kind of, um, roofed area will be the main entrance. Go to the next one, please. Uh, that's the, uh, other side of it, we are adding in a training room, and also a patio area for them to have, next slide, uh, that's again with the roof components. Go to the next one, and then that's the back of the building, we're adding on all the way as far as we can to that line, we're gonna have to work on, potentially some setback issues there with that planning, but, uh, the idea is to add some more space, that's, and if you go to the next one, again, and that's just to go back around, that's a current existing faux, uh, part of the building, that jutting out gray part is the entrance right now.
Yeah.
Continue?
The lease in the back.
Continue, yeah. And you'll notice, actually go back when Christopher saw, they're sharing the same roof components to tie the buildings together. So that's where we're gonna use light materials, and it to draw the buildings together to make it look like we're putting, they're both cohesive. All right, next one? All right, um, actually go back to, we'll go to the next slide after this, go to the, uh, go forward again, I'm sorry. Very, there you go, great. You're doing great. Um, this is now police. So this is the police front, that's the new entrance on Sixth Street, but it'll be actually kind of cornered out to Carolina. Our goal is to create some odd space parking, as you can see, extend downtown. We're trying to push the downtown, um, one more block, uh, bring it right up to the curb, and create some, create some more walkability there. Uh, haven't asked DOT's permission to put parking spaces in, but I'm sure they'll be perfectly fine with it.
Just don't pass.
Yeah.
Anyway.
Just put them in. I didn't, well, I didn't know.
That's right. Keep on going, Christopher. Uh, that is the, more of a side view, this is Sixth Street, or Carolina rather, Carolina, and then just getting a general idea, but keep going, keep on going. That area is the backside of the building, which will be a secure parking lot, it'll be a secure entry for police only, and also the judge. Uh, to the left, structure is a garage to house, uh, some of our, uh, our swap vehicles, or, uh, vehicles we don't use all the time, and the one to the right is gonna be a Sallyport with two cars in there that we can have secure entry and exit for officers if we have to bring anybody in to do anything like that. All that will be a gated, um, access only for police. All right? Okay, now go to the other PowerPoints, this side's blowed up. So this is getting into the interior now of each one. Let's do fire. Okay. So this is, it's, you could explore it a little bit better on your, when you were looking at paper, but if you look in the very middle is the existing fire station, you have the three-door, the three bays, and then to the left, pretty much, uh, from the, uh, bottom jutting out, a little bit over, is straight up, that is the new area. Um, it's creating more office space, uh, room to grow, um, don't get held up on the names of the, the offices, that's the chief's decision. Uh, but he is, he has picked his corner office, that's, that's set in stone. Uh, but they are off, we're expanding out the bunk rooms, we're actually going to a male and female, um, locker and dressing room. Uh, that's something that we don't have now, uh, but we are still maintaining a, uh, communal bunk area. Uh, we talked a lot about this with our fire, and this is something that they feel that they would love to keep and go, that works best for them. And different areas do different ways, it's not really much difference there. Uh, some reconfiguring a little bit in the middle, and then to the right is gonna be an additional garage for the brush truck, and then most importantly, it's gonna have a shower and bunk gear area that they can decon, decon after coming from a, um, fire and not bring that back into the main station. Uh, there also is, we're adding gym equipment to all of them to keep our firefighters and police in ti, tip-top shape.
So this is, uh, same floor, I mean.
Everything, we're only doing single floor, uh, we looked into doing, uh, two-story options, the costs just go up.
And if, uh, police, uh.
Police is also gonna be single story. Um, we, again, we spent a lot of time looking at police, and I believe this is the fourth or fifth iteration of both of these to get what we wanted, and it came down to police actually just drawing these out on Excel and having fun, we have some pretty talented people in our department, so it's amazing. Um, so this is all single story. Uh, when you add in double story, you're now getting ADA issues, elevators, um, stairs, things like that. All right, any questions about fire?
Nah. So far? All right, I'm good.
Now go to police, please? So police is the brand-new building, as we discussed, um, again, to the left is Sixth Street, and then the bottom is Carolina. Um, it has, uh, when you first come in, the front door on the left, it does have a meeting room. I added some meeting spaces for all these, for different, various reasons. At first, we looked at doing a true communal, community space, but then the cost for doing it was too much. Uh, but this can still be used, the classroom setting, different things, uh, for police and different areas, but fire has a very, a smaller one, but still enough for what they need. Um, biggest thing we have here is a very large evidence room, because our, uh, vice unit is actively working all the time. And then, uh, multiple offices for our staff to be, uh, have room to grow, and then most importantly, we have a Sallyport that's secure, and then a swap people secure area.
Yeah. This the one that came out when I packed it?
Yes, yeah.
So that is the chief office.
He's in the, he's in the core office too, it's.
Yeah, yes, but, so, now, I see it on the first one, man, you, don't, don't chief here, man, but okay.
The chief, he requested specific core office, also the first door out.
In the back, the first door out in the back.
Yeah, that's what he wanted.
Gee, smart.
Uh, no, we, we, we played a lot, a lot with this, this was a tough one to do. Um, we talked about adding a core element to it, but we, it's inside against that for space and, uh, area. Um, the main issue was parking, of course, uh, and then just fitting that on that long thin piece. Um, we really, uh, we, we held on this property for a while, it was bought for this reason, um, and so we wanted to make good on that promise that we made before. Any questions about this one?
Daniel, so you, on West Carolina, I mean, it is what it is, I hate going a whole block down one of a major thoroughfare, and all you see is the side of a building.
So, you know. Yeah. So there's gonna be, that's the reason why we have that breaking up down there, it will look different than just a flat building. So it is, it is to create the downtown illusion, cause you know you got a block that's almost like a flat wall, things like that. It will end at that gas station that's there, and then, actually, there's a, um, parking lot in between. So we brought it up, and we were giving a little bit of a effect, so that you won't see, it won't look as just as a flat wall. So it's designed for that purpose, if, I know I already closed it, can you go back to the, um, three-D options, any of those? Go to, um, go up a little bit, that one? Yeah. Okay, well, that's the back one, yeah, right, okay. That one, perfect. So the goal here, it's gonna be about half a block, is the half of the building. Um, this is not landscaped, this is not designed, there's also potential for some, um, additional features in that parking lot area to help break up the, uh, look. And then on the corner, which I'm really excited about, is there's potential to make a little courtyard park right there, no park, but just a feature to help break that up. I, I agree, I don't want a flat wall, that's why when they came back, you're gonna have different roof lines, uh, the different breaking in, the windows, so again, it'll, it'll look, uh, different, but it's, the goal was to bring it up to create a downtown effect, and so that we can maintain it, essentially giving us another block.
Well, if that's what footprint allows, we'll just have to make the best of it.
That's right, yeah.
With the parking spaces, if, if they've got to be in the back or side or whatever.
The other option is to put a parking lot, so that's all you can see, there's a parking lot there, so I tried to bring it closer to the building, this was the better option.
Thank you. You know, of, of course, I had hoped that we could pull off a second story, um, but that's a, a big ask, and unless some giant bags of money fall out of the sky, um, I don't know if it's gonna happen, but I thought this was really cool, I liked the evolution of it. The one idea I had was where that public plaza is, in Sixth and West Carolina, I had envisioned designing that corner, obviously either mirror city hall with the truncated corner, within an entrance in the same, the, um, Brown and Coker Realty Building.
I got you.
Which is across the street here, has that same design feature. Or it would be, this is more similar to my second idea, which is to design that corner of the building with inspiration from the Coker Department Store here, where the, the plaza would be a covered, I guess. where the, the plaza would be a covered, I guess you call it a portico or something? So if we, if we, you know, look to your left and right when you're designing something, right, like, to look at the design of those arches of the department store building, the materials possibly, could be a neat way to, to, to tie the two buildings together.
Christopher, we go back to, so you can see the front door. It should be one of the first images on there. Okay, that one, perfect. So that we already talked about, so that, we actually brought that out again, and I was thinking it more from a security standpoint. We have a door there, then another door there, so the clerk is sitting out there thinking, buzz someone in essentially.
Yeah.
Um, but you could bring that out to the line and mimic a Coker store idea.
This is what I wanted to, to toss out there.
We were playing with that, uh, idea, the entrance. It, it felt weird to have, it was first was flush with the building. So you were parking here, then having to walk around a corner, then the entrance was right there. It didn't, didn't flow the way I wanted, so I started thinking about Waffle House.
Waffle House.
The exact same entrance like that, which is a entrance like.
Can we put the Waffle House in?
I was hoping that'd sponsor my Waffle House, but, uh, no, really, it's just from the standpoint of jutting it out and, and so, so we can certainly talk to them about it. This again is, once they start putting the windows and looking at it, and then security, we can start playing with it.
Cool, cool. Any other questions about, uh, public safety?
Okay.
That's good.
All right. Well, now is, now it's a fun talk about budget recap. Um, you guys have a chance. Um, I know Cole and I are still gonna get together about if he was ever to make it. But any burning questions you have about the budget so far? We are moving forward on May fourteenth with the first budget vote. We have some amendments that are included, are coming up. Yeah.
Amber's here, so she could speak to it, and Chief Barr.
That's always gonna mention.
This is a bit, this is one bigger change that's happened since we had our meeting, but it's an emergency-type thing.
So a couple of things that we are looking at changing in the upcoming budget, which we'll have, is of course, we're looking at the phones still. Uh, we are still looking at some, uh, new furniture, and some of the phones, we're gonna discuss that coming up. I don't have the prices for it yet. But the main big thing, and this is coming back to ADA, and what we're talking about. So we discovered that our current elevator in City Hall, which was built in nineteen seventy, is, um, becoming difficult to find parts for, and so we're actually having issues with the hydraulic system. We need to spend a hundred nineteen thousand dollars to fix it. So we're looking at adding that to our capital for this year. It's something that we can't put off. We had hoped to put it off one more year, but after, in between now and the, when we do look at the budget, it's time to do something with it. So we will be adding it. Right now, we're at a, let's see.
But that one will be a capital lease item. We're, we're not taking that on our general fund, so that will be something that's, that will be in with the capital lease. But Amber, remind me, when y'all talked about this and y'all are doing this, does this have to do with the room?
Yes.
To downstairs? Yes.
Which, uh, TKE are, are serving.
Right.
Um, they've been asking for two years, we want to upgrade it. Um, and then elevator stop, stop was five. Um, and it's at the point where like TKE to get it working, they're gonna have to buy parts, two minutes, so they're gonna run fine. But yeah, for the rooms, it should, I think it's two thousand and ninety-five.
Yeah, well, even, even you would do it, if you make down there for the elevator code, you have to close in the room. That'd be shit and cool.
Okay, we're fine.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's a part that's included with that as well?
Fine. As I said, we, we tried to push it out one more year, but we're just, after looking at it one more time, it's not gonna make it. Um, so we do have, we, this is all coming out, extra costs are capital, and also coming in contingency. Right now, our contingency is still sitting at a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. So any additional items we have will pop out of that. And certainly, if you guys think of anything in between now and then, um, take, keep looking at your budgets. Um, it's a living, breathing document for us until we put it into law. So, um, just take a look at that. Let me know if you see anything. Uh, but we do have another vote that's coming up with budget is the budget amendments. Um, for the past three years, we've been very fortunate to not have to do budget amendments. This year, we are looking to have to do budget amendments. We've had increased costs, a number of things. Um, personnel has gone up, and so right now, we are proposing a budget amendment was my main list. She's still having it? Oh, I won't, whatever. All right, so general fund, I'll start with general fund first. Uh, we are looking at three hundred and forty-eight thousand dollar increase, uh, not increase, but a budget amendment to this year's budget. Uh, a huge chunk of that is gonna be actually our salary and payroll benefits. Hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, uh, towards that. I can explain each of those. Most of it is from, um, it's been public safety-driven. Uh, we did hire a new police chief, had to single him out, but we also had to pay for, um, getting a lot of certified officers from other agencies. When that happens, we have to pay for their training. So they were in that, so we actually spent quite a bit bringing on full-time officers that can start right now, so we don't have to train them. Uh, we've also had quite an increase in overtime because we did have a lapse in some areas and had to fill those in with overtime, so that was a huge increase to our, um, our payroll this past year. We also had to board juveniles this year at an astronomical rate that we never have had to do in the past. We normally budget about three thousand dollars. This year, we have spent thirty-six thousand dollars boarding juveniles. And that was anticipated. Now, we did increase it in this year's budget. We're just trying to see if there's a gonna be a, it ends at some point, but that seems to be the new one, is that we're arresting juveniles unfortunately. Uh, for, not just because, because these are acting in bad capacities.
On, on that question, Daniel, um, with the arrest of juveniles, they have to be taken to Columbia and then brought back before in front of the judge, right?
I believe so, chief.
Chief.
Yeah. And so it's, it is all on us to pay for that, their, their housing. And so we are having to deal with that.
It's interesting, cause I found out in current environment, we talked about this, if they're convicted and they go back, we still pay for it then too, even after they're convicted. Is that correct? We still pay for that.
Well.
Right?
Um.
So.
I, I, I'll pay for that, cause I've, I've seen some.
Right? If we're doing the right thing, it's just an impact to the budget.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll be honest, cause, cause of what police has been doing, we have been very aggressive.
Yeah, because if, if you don't, then you get, um, an adult that started and got a good hope.
Right.
And then, then it's, it just, so catch them in the cradle.
That's right. Uh, number of costs, we had thirty thousand dollars for the, um, design of the new public safety building, and we had to go to a redesign once we got the costs. And then a few other costs for different contracts with, uh, IT, unfortunately. Do you have a question about?
Yeah, I did, wanted to make sure my assumption was correct. The, we had hi, hiring and police, we also had overtime, but the hiring will hopefully fix the overtime issue going forward, right?
Yes, yeah. And we, and these all, these numbers are factored into our current budget, so we, we always go with true-up numbers as best we can. And so whenever we make the budget, and this is a year out, as we try to do, so we try. But no, this, it certainly won't.
Okay.
So to Daniel, the four ninety-one that was in the initial budget, the salaries and benefits increase, you gonna bump that to another three eighty?
No, no, that's not all true sal, three eighty is not all the salaries, three forty-eight. A hundred and sixty-five was salary across multiple departments, so it's not just police. And that has already been adjusted into the new budget, so we don't have to adjust the budget, the upcoming budget. Is that what you're saying?
So, yeah, I just wanna make sure I understand. This is for the, this is where it gets, welcome Brian, welcome Cole. This is where it gets confusing. So we're kind of going back and forth, right? So the part that he talked about originally, the elevator and those things like that, that's the upcoming budget with the big budget book. Right now, we're talking about our current year where we've, we weren't able to anticipate these type of expenses, so we do have to go back and amend our current year budget. So, and one thing, Terry does some excellent work around this. When we do these payrolls, um, also she is prorating it out through the end of the year, cause right now, once again, I'm having to make some assumptions of what it looks like our payroll's trending for, and I would rather try to get our budget as close as possible to correct. Um, so that is confusing, I go back and forth, but this is the current budget.
That we would increase the budget? We don't. The upcoming budget, we don't have to.
The three eighty is current, the four ninety-one is twenty-four, twenty-five.
Um. Let's see, the four ninety-one.
That was in our budget.
Or the budget narrative?
Last week.
Yeah, no, not touching that.
Got you.
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
Um, and there is some good news though, so because we've had such good, um, results with our local government investment pool, LGIP, we're actually gonna pull forty thousand dollars off that as interest income to help pay for that three forty-eight. In addition to that, we're also pulling monies off the multi-county business park, which is closing, and we're looking at that. We're gonna pull a hundred thousand dollars off of that. So we only had to use two hundred and eight thousand dollars of our fund sur, uh, accumulated surplus to pay for this. So it's not true going to the bank and drawing out forty-eight thousand dollars. We had some revenues to help offset that. Um, any question about the general fund? Okay, that vote will come up alongside our budget, so you'll see a budget amendment. Again, we've been very fortunate the last three years not having to do one. Some of you on council remember the one point eight million dollar budget amendments for the past. We've been fortunate, but it just shows that this, this has been a tougher year as far as costs have gone. Now for utility fund, five hundred and five thousand dollars is what we're looking at increases. Now, each of these are tied to specific projects for the most part. So the, a lot of the big products we did that were not planned for, Cloud Road we paid, even though we did it in twenty-two, we were not billed until this past year. So that was fifty-one thousand dollars. We did the stormwater improvements downtown. We actually budgeted, we estimated to be two hundred thousand dollars. It only cost us fifty-four thousand dollars, but that's included in that. And then the ninth, the North Eighth Street sinkhole that we had, that was a hundred thousand dollars that Anderson had come in to take care of it for us. Sinkhole on College and Eighth, wasn't that on College and Eighth?
College and Eighth. But what was the dollar value?
Ninety-nine thousand dollars.
Expensive hole.
It was how, how deep was it? Sixty feet in the ground. We couldn't get to it.
Yeah.
We also made mid-year adjustments, uh, to our payroll for temp. Uh, this is temp staff, because we weren't getting the staff we needed for the water park, so we had to increase this for lifeguards, so that was a hundred and seventy thousand dollars of that. Food and beverage, of course, went up with that, and insurance and chemical supplies went up astronomically this past year. Sixty thousand dollar increase we saw, which we couldn't account for. Now, good news on that one as well, is that we also have funding to pay for that. Uh, we have interest income, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. We were able to increase, explain all these to me. So we already explained the penalty fees and sewer rents, that's right.
So what we budgeted for our penalties and fees were actually trending above, so we have forty-five thousand to help with that in penalties and fees. Sewer rents, sixty-one thousand, water park revenues.
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five, and then accumulated surplus of two hundred thousand.
That's.
The good part, this is not all just fund reserves, thank goodness. But the LGIP has been so good to us, a hundred and thirty thousand in interest income.
Local government investment.
That's right.
That's the money that's so fluid for us. We can move back and forth.
It's very nice. So it's been helpful.
So we tried to offset as much as we could with revenues and take as much from the fund balance as we could, uh, on, on curve of the surplus, so, um, any questions about any of those? It is, you'll see all of it in the upcoming.
I just didn't want y'all to just see it on next week. I wanted to go ahead and give you a chance to talk through it.
Thank you.
But ask me any questions y'all have on that.
Certainly between now and then. You'll see the breakdown. It's gonna, this ordinance will have all the numbers listed, so you can see every single one. If any questions about this, let us know. But each of those are tied to a specific reason for why they went over, and tied to operational costs, not providing anything for the most part.
Excellent.
Speaking of revenue, the water park opens in eleven days.
It sure does. May eighteen?
It's coming.
It's coming on. We are still, we, uh, we should have a, a more solid update on our splashback coming up. I hope to have that one of the next work sessions. Hopefully, it'll be in, it'll be June after.
It's early June.
Early June. It won't be open for opening day. We ran into some issues with DHEC and other things, as they, as any of these products do, but we still have it open this summer.
Does your, um, workforce, your employees, you have enough?
Yes, so we, our HR department and, uh, water park staff have been extremely hard at work. We just had a seventy-five-person orientation this weekend, had eighteen yesterday again for another one, which should push us, I mean, to about ninety lifeguards that we need. We like to be in that kind of seventy-five and up number.
Yes.
At the end of this, we hope to have about a hundred and eight lifeguards, and that's not including the, another hundred or so for the, um, artillery staff that we have over. So it's gonna be about two hundred and thirty people.
Great.
All hired and managed by our lovely staff out there.
Looking better than last year.
Excellent.
Last year was really good. It looked better than the year before. And we made that adjustment, as we said, and then we, we had a good year last year. That's tied to the a hundred and seventy thousand dollar increase. Drastically tied. Uh, if you have any other question about that, that's all I have.
Anything else? We go to the club? All right, well, hearing no objection, uh, we hereby are adjourned.
Bob, did she rock that thing last night?